The LFA only do such state of joy. Yeah, aren't arbiters of French and etcetera. Actually, there is no statutory objection saying that this is French and etcetera. Okay. None about this. Presenting off, I isn't going to help with it. So it kind of lost the delight. The problem is reasons for refusal, bringing away to consultation and all the others. As well, if I just do this to signal issue later, hopefully they'll get it. I can't set it off in a second. No, you know, you have the questions to answer. Any aspect we have as issues because they've been very, you know, very competitive by third parties.
Oh, lady. Oh, yeah. Right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Planning Committee. I'm councillor Janetta Soshin. Before I start, I have a few announcements to make. In case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately following the green fire exit signs out to the Assembly Point, which is by the War Memorial in Duke Street. If anyone requires assistance, please let me know. Lifts should not be used. Please remain at the Assembly Point and do not attempt to return to the building until you've been advised that it's safe to do so. The toilets are situated on the landing at the top of the main staircase and on the ground floor in the customer service area. Please turn off your mobile phones during the meeting. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but only councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure the cameras are pointed only in this direction. The meeting is also being broadcast via YouTube and recorded. When speaking, please, may I remind the committee to ensure you turn on your microphone and speak closely into it? A red light will appear on the middle button to indicate your microphone is switched on. When you've finished speaking, please remember to turn the micro- microphone off again. Thank you. Moving on to apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chair. I've had apologies from councillors Armstrong and Sampson and councillor Walsh's sub in for councillor Sampson. And I understand councillor Ford perhaps is running a bit late, but should be here soon.
Right, okay, thank you. Declarations of interest. All members are reminded they must disclose interests at this point or when that interest becomes apparent later in the meeting. Who would like to speak? Thank you. Councillor Lee.
Yes, thanks, Chair. For item six, I need to step out. I'm predetermined. Oh, I'm sorry, did I jump?
It's all right. Councillor Hall, that was, yes, I realise that. Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Chair. With regards to item six, I was absent from the last committee, so I will remove myself from the committee and sit over there.
Thank you. Councillor Walsh?
And also for item six, I wasn't present for the last meeting, so I will remove myself as well.
Right, thank you. When it comes to question time, each person has two minutes.
Mister Minutes of the Last Meeting.
Ah, indeed. Minutes of the last planning committee, is it your wish that I sign them as a true record? Like so? Drop it again. Yes, so people in the gallery, if you are going to speak, you have two minutes each. Where an application is returning to the committee that's been deferred for a site visit for further information or to consider detailed reasons for refusal, no further public questions or statements may be submitted. So we have public questions for later, but we have no one to speak now, do we?
No, they'll be at their relevant item. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Right, we go on to item six. And that is the one that several people have to move out for. It's the land west of Foxhamraven, Chelmer Village Way, Chelmer Village, Chelmsford, Essex. I hand over to councillor... Oh, I'll wait until everyone's moved. Right, can I hand over to councillor Dobson to speak?
Okay, sorry, Chair, I wasn't sure whether there was been further presentation. I, I, if, as you remember, I was the proposer for the refusal for this application initially. And I suggested certain reasons. Obviously, the planning officer has now come back with the detailed reasons for refusal on the officer report. And I just wanted to say that I am more than happy with the wording and for those five reasons are, I would like to propose that the application is refused for the five reasons detailed in the officer report and that to be agreed.
Thank you. Do you have a second, eh? Seconded, all those in favour of the refusal? Anyone against? Can I make sure everyone has put their hands up? Can you do that again, please, because not everybody replied at the same point? All those in favour of councillor Dobson's proposal? Any against? Um, I'm in favour as well. Any subsan- some, any absentions?
We've had everyone.
No one left.
Right, okay, thank you. In that case, the application has been refused for those reasons. Thank you. Item seven. Land southwest of Brooklyn, Sheepcoats Lane, Little Waltham, Chelmsford, Essex. Can I have the officer's report, please?
Sorry, Chair.
We're missing councillor.
We're missing councillor.
How come?
He went outside.
Oh!
I don't think he will, six will be home so quickly.
Probably not, I'd forgotten that. Thank you. Gosh, I thought I'd lost you for some other reason. Thank you. Anyway, moving on to item seven, land southwest of Brooklyn. Can I have the officer's report, please?
Thank you, Chair. This is, this proposal has been presented to committee at the request of councillor Steele. The application site is situated within the Green Wedge and Rural area, beyond the defined, the boundary of the defined settlement of Little Waltham. This shows you how you approach the site with the image on the top left showing Churchill and the arrows pointing towards the lane where you, which is Sheepcoats Lane. And then the bottom, the image on the bottom left is as you progress up the lane and the image on the top right is the next one and then the image on the bottom right is the rear of the site. This is a site plan of the proposal, which is for a four-bedroom detached property in place of the existing building. This property is two stories with the, the upper floor is above natural ground level and the lower ground and the second floor is below natural ground level built into the slope. The main issues for consideration is the principal development and whether it is appropriate development within the Green Wedge and the Rural area. The areas of your policy which are most applicable is whether it's acceptable under previously developed land, replacement building, infill development and whether it meets the three strands of sustainable development. This is, shows the proposal and the existing building. So it shows the differences between the two, the elevations of the two proposals. There is a height difference of 0.5 metres at the front of the building and 2.2 metres at the rear of the building to provide that two-storey form at the rear. And the proposal would be a four-bedroom property, which would result in a greater level of activity than what's previously exhibited. The existing building, the most recent plan permission was to use the building in association with the garden of number nineteen Churchill as part of their garden. The site has now been sold separately from number nineteen Churchill. So the proposal would result in a greater level of activity beyond that existing incidental use. Here we have the comparison between the existing proposed site plans. So you can see there that it's showing that the floor space in the ground is going to be larger. So even though the floor area above ground would be only ten square metres larger and 0.3 larger in width and 1.3 larger in width in terms of the overall floor area, it would be over double than the existing. And excluding the air for parking, the proposal was spread from sixty square metres to over, to over one hundred and fifty-three square metres. So the combination of this increased scale, size, mass and spread with the greater use of the site is considered to erode the rural appearance of the site. In terms of replacement building, it would be much larger than existing building and again, it would be a much greater use. In respect of infill development, what I've indicated on this slide with the blue shapes is where the existing properties are. The proposal would be in the middle between there, it's not considered to be a small gap between those two properties. So it doesn't fulfill the criteria of infill development. It would be harmful to environmental strands of sustainable development as well and therefore it's considered not to meet the three strands of sustainable development. The application is recommended for refusal.
Thank you. Right, we have some people who is to speak. Laura Dudley Smith?
Good evening, councillors. My name is Laura Dudley Smith and I'm a planning consultant for Sierra's Property, representing Stratstone Developments. Starting point for assessment under part B of Policy DM seven is the condition of the existing site, its contribution to local character and how it is perceived within the Green Wedge. In its current state, the site detracts from the surrounding landscape and rural character. It does not contribute to public access of the Green Wedge and sitting on the edge of a housing estate amongst existing residential properties as shown on the supporting map, its further development will not risk rural coalescence. During recent committee debate, we heard about the importance of the Green Wedge in protecting the character of Chelmsford River Valleys. This site is not a protected flood plain, it is previously developed land with no direct relationship to the river. Your policy supports the redevelopment of brownfield land in the Green Wedge. Given the limited role of the site already, it should not be automatically assumed that any change to the site would negatively impact the Green Wedge. Instead, we have an opportunity to enhance the site's contribution and overall appearance as can be seen from the accompanying CGI imagery. You will note that your officers consider the scheme to be of high quality design and agree that the physical relationship with neighbouring properties is acceptable. Contrary to the officer's report, any increase in scale or massing would not be perceivable from public viewpoints as other than Sheepcoats Lane, there are none. The report mentions views from the allotments, which are merely glimpses as opposed to any appreciation of the site as a whole. They would also be completely screened by the proposed ecology and landscape buffer, which is to include ten new trees. When considering different design options through pre-application engagement with officers, the advice received specifically acknowledged that the semi-underground level would not be readily visible from the road and that the proposals would be visually comparable to the existing Nissan hut. The applicant has worked proactively to address comments received during the consultation period and there are no statutory objections to the proposals. We respectfully request your support for this opportunity to provide a sustainable and low-impact family home on previously developed land in a residential area.
Thank you. Moving on, Raymond Scott Cantor, come, I think Josh will be speaking. Um, sorry, is Josh here? Yeah, he can read it out for me, thank you.
Oh, Chair, I'm just gonna go and check the mics working, I'm not sure if it is fully on.
Can we hold on a minute? The mic may not be working properly. Yeah? Okay. Apparently it is now working.
Thank you.
Right, Josh.
The Scots submit this statement in support of this application and to provide context about its use over the past fifteen years. They've been the lawful owners of this property since October two thousand and eight. It is worth noting that before the purchase in two thousand and eight, this land was vacant for years and used as an illegal dumping ground. The Scots took the initiative to clear the accumulated waste to deter further flooding. From October nineteen eighty-two to August twenty twenty-two, Mr and Mrs Scott resided at the neighbouring property nineteen Churchill. Following the purchase of this plot, they used the Nissan hut and the surrounding land for various domestic purposes. As illustrated by the photographic evidence in appendix one, the Scots primarily used the Nissan hut for domestic storage and garaging, housing garden equipment, tools, building materials and vehicles. In two thousand and twelve, the Scots obtained permission to use the surrounding land as part of their garden. Since then, they have maintained it meticulously, using it for leisure, planting and as an allotment. The half-standing area has been used for parking and hosting visitors. On several occasions, the land in their garden at nineteen Churchill was open to visitors as part of the Little Waltham Open Gardens event. Without this proposed redevelopment, the land's future use is uncertain. If sold on the open market, it could become a storage facility or revert to builder's yard for which it was used for many years by the previous tenant at Brooklands, the next house up the lane, until Brooklands was sold without this plot and the area left derelict and unused for many years. This outcome would be less sympathetic to the local environment and out of character with the area. This application represents a high-quality, well-designed contemporary scheme. The Scots believe it will have no material or visual impact on the character of the area. Instead, it offers a modern living solution which respects and reflects the current structure. The Scots firmly believe this project would be a positive addition to Little Waltham, providing family housing whilst enhancing the area without compromising the village's character.
Thank you. Can we move to Alex Brown, please?
Sorry, Chair, Josh has got his own statement as well.
Right, I thought, right, I understand, sorry. I didn't realise you were doing two statements. Okay, please carry on.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the planning committee. I'm Josh Fitzwater, land and planning manager at Stratstone Developments. We're a local developer proposing an opportunity for a family to create their own unique home in a highly sustainable location, abutting the settlement edge of Little Waltham. Since two thousand and twenty-three, I've been working with a local family who own the site. The primary concern appears to be the perceived intensification of domestic activity resulting from the creation of a new residential home and whether that impact is harmful to the character and setting of the Green Wedge. However, the context of the site is of crucial importance. Firstly, the site is already domestic in nature. The proposed garden area has been lawfully used for domestic purposes for over a decade. The existing building has served as domestic storage for even longer and the half-standing area has been regularly used for parking, vehicle turning and accommodating visitors during social events. The council asserts that parking on the site frontage would be detrimental to the area's character. However, recent photographic evidence, see appendix one, from a random site visit yesterday morning reveals unauthorised parking of three unknown vehicles. The landowners confirm that unauthorised parking is a common occurrence. Our proposal aims to formalise parking arrangements by positioning two parking spaces behind enhanced landscaping, thereby benefiting both the immediate area and the wider Green Wedge. Any potential increase in activity should be evaluated in the context of the existing use and its potential intensity, the benefits of redeveloping brownfield land, the creation of a new family home and the improvements to the site's appearance within its rural setting. In essence, any increase in activity must be balanced against the current use and the overall benefits our proposal will bring to the area. While each application is decided on its own merits, planned decisions within the last two years set precedent for similar impacts and increases in activity. In previous correspondence with to officers and councillors, we provided seven directly comparable plan permissions for the redevelopment of domestic outbuildings to provide separate dwellings in rural locations. Direct quotes from officers are included in my written statement which highlight the disparity in decision-making. With the recent planning reform affirming the importance of brownfield development, schemes like ours causing little to no material impact should be viewed proactively.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, just in conclusion to reiterate, that's all right.
I have the rest of the information, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Right now, it's Alex Brown, sorry about that.
I don't even know her too much.
Oh, in that case, you have the information in front of you. So we'll move on Craig Mills and Ida? Right, okay, neither of those. Right, before, ah, councillor Steele, you'll have to fill in the gaps.
I am confused because Dan told me I spoke before the officers. But, Dan, you'll need to check that out then, that's what you told me. Right, so I brought this to the planning committee, but I have to say I struggled with the decision to do that. Six residents have objected, parish councils have objected, but two have supported it. And I've been there and I've had a look. And I will say this again later, but you've got to see it to see what the Nissan hut looks like from the road and imagine how it will look when this is built and it will look exactly the same from the road. And the roads and the, the ground slopes away and at the back, it's then all sheltered with bushes and trees and so it, it doesn't seem inappropriate to me on conclusion and, but I am taking into account that residents have objected. Now, the objections relate to water treatment and sewage and parking and disruption during build stage. Some of those don't count in planning terms. But the, the applicants have done more work and I understand that they've reassured the planners that these issues have been addressed. So from what I can see, the, the objections raised by the parish council and raised by the locals of those who did object have been addressed. I also note the concerns raised by ECC Historic Environmental Branch about the proposed development being located directly adjacent to a spring and the possibility of the prehistoric Roman or later activities surviving associated with this water source. However, the Historic Environment Branch have recommended a series of conditions which I believe that the applicant is happy to comply with. So going back to this, I think with the objections being addressed, I know it's in the Green Wedge, it's on the edge of the Green Wedge. Just down the road, they're building five hundred and twelve blow homes, surrounded just a bit north by some, by the pylons and here we are with a little development on the edge of Little Waltham. Sustainable village, can walk to the doctors, can catch a bus, can walk to the school, walk to the pub. It's not a mass development, it's one house replacing a building. It will look like the same building from the front when it's done. The appearance from Churchill, in my opinion, will not change. And it's shrouded by vegetation at the back, so again, in my opinion, it fits in quite well. I'm sticking my neck out because some of my residents object, but I think their objections have been addressed. But don't take my word for it, if you don't agree, go and have a look at it. Go to the site and have a look at the Nissan hut as it stands now and imagine what it will, what it will look like. I'm hoping that you oppose the officer's recommendations purely on the basis that I think another house in Little Waltham is an advantage and there aren't any real objections to it, the only one being the Green Wedge. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Right, before we go to the committee, does the officer want to come back about anything?
Yes, I would, thank you, Chair. And so we had to start with in terms of the visibility, which was a point that was brought up. Okay, sorry about that.
You really need...
Can you see my lips now? Is that better? Okay. So I just wanted to address the visibility, if I can get to the right slide. So I just wanted to show you some images from the rear, just to, because that was brought up in terms of the statement about, because I've already shown you the image from the front, but it was brought up about images to the rear. So I just thought I'd show you some images that from the public open space at the moment, you can get glimpses and you can, when you get closer, there is a greater view of, of the existing building, which will be two stories at the rear. So it'll be much taller at the rear. So I just wanted to address that point that was made by the first questions. I also wanted to make a comment in respect of the image that was shared by the first question that you will have councillors. And I just wanted to say that on that image, it showed the residential coloured yellow and I just wanted to make the point that that's not representative of your, of the local plan which doesn't allocate, doesn't provide any shading to residential development, just has the defined settlement and the Green Wedge. And in this case, there is no change between the adopted local plan and the pre-submission plan that's currently out to consultation. This boundary has been defined by the landscape consultant and this site is on the, you know, the start of this Green Wedge, so it's a sensitive location. In terms of the pre-application response, any pre-application response is not binding on any future decision that the council may make. The council doesn't disagree that it's domestic, but it's incidental domestic. There is a clear difference between the use being incidental and when it's a separate dwelling house. That is a material change of use that is recognised in planning. And I just wanted to point out that with that becomes a greater activity in terms of the use. In terms of those alternative uses, in terms of being a building yard or other uses, that these would require plan permission. In terms of the respect of other applications that were submitted as part of the application to refer officers to, each application is decided on their own merits. Of these, the majority were not within the Green Wedge and they were all different contexts. This is a very different context. It goes very quickly from a suburban context to a rural context. And I believe that this site is... site is at the edge of that, and that it's gonna, will change the character of the lane. In respect of the comments that were raised by residents who didn't speak today, I just thought I'd address them as well. So, as part of the application, we did receive some further drainage information, but in terms of the concerns, in terms of foul drainage, this is dealt with under building regulations, so this wouldn't be something that we would be concerned with. As per the officer report, we did feel that additional drainage information could be provided in terms of the impact, so that's why that could be covered by suitably worded condition, and what didn't represent a reason for refusal. In terms of the impact to the lane during construction, this has been considered in the officer report, and a suitably worded condition to provide a construction management plan could be provided, so this again didn't represent a reason for refusal. I believe that addressed all the points.
Thank you. In that case, I'll go straight to the committee who would like to start. Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chair. I can understand why councillor Steele brought this to the committee, it is a tricky one, unlike some that are called into this committee. A couple of random points and random questions. First of all, I do quite like the structure, it is sympathetic to what was there. I believe it's quite similar to some of the Nissan Hut abodes over North End from a few years ago, the way it's been developed. However, I do agree that the new building doesn't replace, it's not the same usage, so that is against policy. Also, looking at the slides and Google Earth, it doesn't, it's not infill in a small gap. But one question I would like to ask is, what is the definition of a small gap? Is this purely subjective? Polls Part C of DM7, DM8 suggests the new building is not materially larger than the one it replaces. I believe it's about 20%. The footprint above land is about 20% larger, so it's not that much larger. Random question, does the application meet internal light standards? Because a lot of it is below ground. I did see there is a light well there, but could you clarify that? I have to give some weight to the previous refusal, that was outline planning permission, so in theory, the concept of a dwelling on this site has been refused, let alone whatever that house is. Any other comments? I think that's it for now, so, yeah, also, the red line there, so I think I missed the start of this part, can you confirm that's the outline of the settlement boundary, the red line there? Thank you.
So, I just wanted to bring it back to the original one, which had the different areas outlined, pointed out. So, this shows, as I say, where the defined settlement is boundary with the red line there. Everything beyond that to the north and the east is the rural area and green wedge.
Okay, there were quite a few questions.
Yes, yes, of course, of course. So, in terms of a small gap, so the, what the policy says is, it's a small gap within a built-up, within a built-up area, that's not a built-up kind of line of development there, so there is, and it is, and as I say, there is a big gap between residential properties of, I think it's a, I mean, it was 100 metres, 112 metres, and that's why we don't consider it to be a small gap. In terms of the internal light standards... So, this here has the floor plan, so it has the, the upper floor and the lower floor, so the one on the, on your left will be the lower floor. So, it's not clear on here about what's in each room, but I can explain you through it. So, on the lower ground floor, at the back, we have the main bedroom, and that has a light source to the rear. On the, the main bit on the right, which is the larger space, that's the live-in, the dining, and the kitchen area. So, it has its main light source to the rear, and then it has some light coming from the light well on its right. Towards the rear of the bedroom, that's a small study playroom, and the light would be affected within that small space. On the upper floor, the bedroom at the front is, is at ground floor level, so it has light from normal levels, as you would from a ground level, and the same with the other bedrooms in the middle and the rear. So, the only space that would be affected in terms of light is this small space, which is the study and playroom, and because of the style of the room, how it's gonna be used, we didn't think it would be that harmful in terms of the internal living conditions for the future occupiers.
Okay, have you... Is that covered?
Sorry, I'd like to come back on the, the small gap. If you put the slide up showing 112 metres, is, is there not an abode just to the northeast of the red square?
To that square that you can see with the roof, that's the garage of Brooklands, if that's the one you're referring to.
Oh, sorry, so that's, that's not the Nissan Hut that's there?
The Nissan Hut is within the, the red edge, which is with the silver kind of rectangle, so that, within that red edge, that's where the site is, and the Nissan Hut is there.
Are you clear?
Within the red rectangle, that's where the Nissan Hut is. Is it the rectangle that you're talking, that's to the right of that?
Yes, I thought there is another settlement just slightly to the northeast of that red boundary.
Oh, I'd see, I think I can see what you mean.
Do you mean the...
Is there a house nearby?
Is it this one here?
We could do with a pointer!
That is the garage of Brooklands.
Right, okay, so where is Brooklands?
Brooklands is that blue square that's up towards the, the end there.
Right, okay, so the, the top square is Brooklands...
Yeah, and the bottom one is 19 Churchill.
Okay, so they're garages, okay, so I thought the roof line looked like a substantial house.
No, it's not, it's a garage.
Thank you.
Well, that was worth checking that. Okay, councillor Wilson, you wanted to come in?
Thank you, Chair, I think most of my questions have actually been answered fairly eloquently. I must confess, notwithstanding the officer's recommendations, which is for refusal, I do have a lot of sympathy for this application. I think it will represent an improvement, if it was to be passed, it would represent a, an improvement to that lane. I know the lane well, and quite frankly, at the moment, it just looks like a bit of a rundown shack, which is really what it is. And I think, you know, to tidy it up, to smarten it up, and to turn it into a usable dwelling would actually be of great benefit to, to the local area. And again, you know, you're looking at the map, it is, it's a very narrow lane, what we're looking at, Sheepcoats Lane there. It could only be, probably, I haven't measured it, but 20 feet from the defined settlement boundary, and as you say, next to other ancillary buildings to Brooklands at the end of the lane there. And of course, Brooklands is outside the defined settlement boundary as well, so I don't know, I mean, it's, we are just, I think, being a little bit hamstrung by our own policies, which I suppose we have to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Jobson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, most of the points that I was querying have, have already been raised, but I just really wanted to just clarify, where the, the actual site could be, in paragraph 6.15, you say the site could be considered as previously developed land. But then you go on to say that the building is not in the same use as the existing. I mean, could you perhaps please clarify that, inasmuch that if a building is for ancillary residential use, which I believe this building is, having it as a separate dwelling itself, how does it work as far as being in the same, not in the same use? Because obviously, if there is a, a separate building that would potentially be made into a separate dwelling, if it's not already a separate dwelling, it sounds as though it wouldn't be approved, but we know that from, from sort of previous applications, that buildings have been turned into new dwellings, and I just really wanted to clarify the, the not in the same use as part of it. Thank you, I hope that makes sense.
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, it's, the site is previously developed land, and that's why we've considered it against previously developed land. In terms of the building, its lawful use is as an incidental building to a residential property, which means that the uses of it are related to the main dwelling house, so all the main uses that you would get in a dwelling house, such as sleeping, eating, dining, all those live-in uses would be within a dwelling house, with what you would have in an incidental building would be, wouldn't be a full-time use, so it would be like using it as a shed, or a summer house, or a gym, or any sort of those kind of uses. So, what the difference is between an incidental building and a residential dwelling is that it would be occupied more regularly, it would have its, it would generate its own movements to and from the property in terms of vehicles, and it would have, it would be occupied, as I say, more regularly, so it would have lights on at night and those kind of things. I hope that answers your question.
Sorry, it was just really just the, the definition of, of an incidental building. I mean, I presume this one has actually been hived off from the main house. It is a standalone building, is that, you know, does that come into it?
So, so originally, it came incorporated as part of the residential garden of the 19, so it got the lawful use, is an incidental building, and since it's been sold off separately, so the question would be about whether that use has now been abandoned because it has been separated, or, and at the present moment of time, it could then be incorporated, it could still be an incidental building, because it could be incorporated into Brooklands, or it could be incorporated into number 19 Churchill's Garden.
Okay. Councillor Sopat?
Thank you. I'm also sympathetic to this application, I think the, the design looks, looks pretty good, but development does need to be truly outstanding to be suitable for the green wedge, and development which materially, materially harms the role, function, intrinsic character and beauty of the green wedge shouldn't be approved. As we've heard, this doesn't meet the principles of sustainable development, and I think the points put forward by officers in refusal of the application seem to me to be robust. The principle of protecting the green wedge must be maintained in line with the council's own policies, and apologies in advance for this, but otherwise, it's the thin end of the green wedge. We risk further development in the green wedge, in my opinion, and we should protect the rural character of our rural areas, so I'll be minded to vote against this, or in favour of the officer's application.
Thank you. Councillor, oh, it's councillor Fosker.
Yeah, I thought the, the previous owner made a good point when he questioned what would happen to the land if it wasn't developed as a house, whether, if it's not allowed to be developed, what will happen to it? Will it be used for storage? Will it be used as a dump? Because at the moment, the plans seem to, as several people have commented, to actually improve the look of the, that particular spot, and what will happen to it if it's not developed as a house? Secondly, I feel that the, the, the local council, the parish council, sorry, the parish council's main objections were to do with the water and water courses, and they seem to be answered by the, by the applicant, and can I just ask the officers whether they are happy with the, the water situation? Thank you.
Yes, please. Thank you. So, in terms of the, what would happen to the building if permission wasn't granted, this isn't something that we give significant weight to in terms of the decision about other uses of that building. In terms of the water courses, a drainage scheme has been submitted, but, and they propose a soakaway to deal with surface water, but because of the changes in the ground level that are necessary to construct the building, and it's unclear exactly how this soakaway would work in relation to existing underground water sources, which is why we required, we would require extra details to be provided by condition in terms of those water impacts.
Okay. Right, does there anyone else who wants to speak? Yes, councillor Highland.
Thank you, Chair. As I look at this, this is outside the defined settlement area, it's in green wedge, so for me, I think supporting the officer's decision would be the way I would be approaching this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lee, do you want to come back?
Thank you, yeah, just a quick one. I'd agree with councillor Highland, we do need to be consistent with our decisions with regards to protecting the green wedge. As we've just seen with the previous application, we turned down 54, whatever, affordable houses, so I think we need to be consistent, so I will be voting with the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless there's anyone else wishes to speak, and I don't think there is, I move that the application, land south-west of Brooklands, Sheepcoats Lane, Little Waltham, be refused for the reasons detailed in the report, that pages 92 to 93 of the agenda pack. Do I have a second, or? I do. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? One abstention. In that case, the application has been refused. Thank you very much. Right, we'll move on to item eight, which is Dovdale Sports Centre, Vicarage Road, Chelmsford. Bear with us for a minute while we change officers. Thank you. Right. Can I have the officer's report then, please?
Good evening, members. This application is for two small, single-storey extensions to form a new reception area and enable internal alterations, and also the installation of three air-source heat pumps. Dovdale Sports Centre is located within the Chelmsford urban area, close to the city centre. The existing reception is within a gap between the sports centre and Chelmsford College. The nearest residential properties are in Rothsey Avenue. The two areas shaded in blue are the proposed extensions between the college and the sports centre. Due to their location between the two buildings, there will not be harm to the amenity of the residential neighbours, and the design is considered acceptable. These are the existing, they're quite hard to see actually, and proposed elevations are very light, unfortunately. They're very much like the elevations that are already there. The block plan of the site shows where the three air-source heat pumps will be sited. They're in a discreet location and not readily visible from public vantagees. They are close to the rear boundaries of some residential properties in Rothsey Avenue. A noise impact assessment was submitted with the application, and a condition would be imposed to ensure that the noise from the pumps is five decibels below the current background noise level. The application is recommended for approval.
Thank you. Right, does anyone want to speak on this application? Who would like to start? Councillor Highland?
Can I just check that we don't have to declare an interest here, as the city council have a... as the City Council have an interest in the building?
That's a fair question. Um, I would have said not, but I will ask.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair. Um, the answer is no because the, the legislation does deal with planning applications where the council is applicant. Um, but that is one of the reasons why it has to come to Planning Committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone who would like to speak? Counselor Dobson.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I've read through this and again, it's, um, it's, it's, it's a good, but it's a community benefit. It, um, it doesn't have any adverse effects on the character or anything of the local environment and I'd be fully in support of it. Um, I just, I would add, as far as air-source heat pumps is concerned, um, just as a side, we've, you know, I've recently had one installed and it is incredibly quiet. So if there are residents who are concerned about it, the noise, et cetera, um, they're not noisy, not, not modern ones. So anyway, thank you, Chair.
Anyone else? Would anyone like, Counselor Tron?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm pleased to see that the development to modernise and improve the existing facility for the use of the community and the college students, I think is very welcome.
Thank you. Right, I shall then move that the application for Duvdale Sports Centre because Rowan Chelmsford be approved, subject to the conditions on the report at pages one oh eight and one oh nine of the Agenda Pact. Do I have a second up? I do. All those in favour? In that case, that's fine. That, uh, application is approved. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm moving on now to Banter's Field, item nine. Okay. Right, can I have the officer's report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. So members have a full report before them. So this will be a brief presentation, happy to embellish on any further points through questioning. I have some reserved slides. Um, in terms of the description, description as you see, um, on the screen here. So application, application for outline plan permission, development of integrated retirement community comprised of one hundred and ninety units C2 use with all matters reserved. Just want to highlight some key, um, matters for members in terms of the description. So just note, all matters reserved, so this is an outline application except for access. So access is detailed as part of the submission. Um, it's also, um, it's part of the consideration. All of the matters are basically reserved for reserve matters submissions further, further down the line. So that's a fairly, fairly, um, uh, normal way to deal with such strategic sites as members have dealt with these before, uh, before committee. The other element I just wanted to highlight is a hundred and ninety units. So just keep that number in, in mind when I'm talking about the strategic policy more widely. And C2 use, uh, which is a essentially residential institution. So members will be aware that C3 use is, is standard residential accommodation. C2 usually involves an element of care, ordinarily care home. But in this case, um, the retirement village is, is, is presented as a C2 use. Wasn't necessarily by the policy, but I'll come on to, um, those issues shortly. So just to introduce where we are, um, within Chelmsford. Obviously, members will be familiar with, um, Site Seven, which is the Great Lees allocation. So obviously, to, to the west of the village, we have Seven A. Um, to the north, we have Seven B. To the east, we have kind of, or northeast, Seven C. Seven D is already built out. So Seven A is the substantive element of, of site, growth site seven. Um, this application deals specifically with part of, um, Seven B. So Seven B is the northern element of the allocation. Uh, the essay just denotes that this is allocated for specialist residential, um, uses. So the growth site policy, um, as members will note from the local plan, each, each one of these, um, growth site areas, so Seven A, B, C and D, have specific wording associated with them in terms of their, their policy requirements. And just to give a, a snapshot of what Seven B says. So we're looking at, within Seven B, uh, we're looking at two hundred and fifty new specialist residential homes for older persons. Um, so that's a, a, a key point. There is a wider definition within the reason justification, um, but I don't, I don't wish to elaborate at this point. Um, the other elements of consideration, main vehicle, vehicle access to the site will be from London Road. Uh, London Road is just to the west of Seven B. Um, provision of pedestrian and cycle connections and provide a well-connected internal road, um, layout. So they're fairly standard, um, commentary amongst, um, strategic site policies. I'm just going to introduce where we specifically, so this is just a, um, a Google image of, well, you see the waist course there, that, that ellipse shape on the left-hand side. Just the red dot there is where we are in terms of, um, the application site. Site known as Banter's Field, um, locally. And this just gives an outline of the application site itself. So you'll see within that, that field outline, it's roughly about fifty percent, possibly less, fifty percent site area in terms of, um, Seven B itself. I just included the red line just to show, um, there's, there's a cutout area um, just to the south-west of that red line. Um, that deals with the Suds Pond. And you'll note that the application extends across the road, the new road, the one, one-three-one, and then connects it to Murchamall Lane. So those are all underground works associated with drainage as part of Suds strategy. So that's just an explanation of the application site why it's, why it's an irregular shape. Um, in terms of relevant context, I just wanted to highlight the, um, the approved master plan. Again, the report details, um, some of the detailing and the back and forth that happened between kind of policy board, um, in terms of revisions to the, to the master plan. So master plan approved, um, in February twenty-three. So key items to take from that is that, um, well, on the right-hand side, you'll see what the master plan showed in terms of the, the land use designation. Um, to the north of that, we have the Travelling Showperson site that was, um, basically endorsed by the master plan and, and came before us, um, last April, uh, as a, as a resolution to approve. Uh, obviously, you just, just see that Seven B is just safe of that on the, on the eastern side. So the master plan defined the land uses. So those yellow blocks you see were roughly indicative about what the master plan was happy with in terms of the buffering to the north, to the, to, and to the east. Uh, and obviously the Suds Pond shown to the south. So the master plan dealt with the land uses, dealt with the rough development form in terms of what, what the shape within Seven B would look like. Um, and one of the issues that, uh, was raised with the master plan was as a commitment to, um, cycle pedestrian routes, um, not travelling from the village, but obviously connecting to Seven A to the west, but also travelling northwards to, um, not really roundabout. So I'm just going to deal with, um, a slide just to deal with, um, planning obligations. So the, the report, the, so the report runs through, um, while all those matters are acceptable. I'm just going to deal with, um, the topics for the, the one oh six obligations. Um, firstly, affordable housing. The office report details in the background, obviously this application's been in with us for a couple of years now. Um, it was subject to a viability assessment, um, which is, you know, not, or certainly not unusual, um, in, in some cases in terms of the Great Lees applications. Um, so we had a, a, a basic viability assessment submitted by the applicant. That is then reviewed by the council. Um, the office report details why you wouldn't ordinarily expect affordable housing within the site on a specialist residential, um, allocation such as this. So we're already working on, on, on the basis of a, of a default to, um, financial contribution. And that financial contribution was settled at, um, just short of one point three million. Highways works, again, I can, I can go into much more detail, but just for the purpose of, of this report. Uh, basically, the, the highways works, um, basically deal with pedestrian cycle routing to go south as well as north. Um, what we're dealing with in terms of red line just deals with its own mitigation. But as part of this one oh six package, as identified in the report, the same landowner owns the remainder of Seven B as well as land on the opposite side within the Travelling Showperson site, as well as that Island site as well. So, um, essentially what we're securing is, um, an area of land that will be secured through the one oh six, uh, and that, and those works to be done as part of a separate planning application, which is yet to be determined. Um, and is, and is not before us this evening, but is, is ongoing dialogue in terms of the detailing of the application. So, um, that is a, that is a, a side issue, albeit that this application does secure, um, the land provision of those works. So that's a, that's a, an occupation to agreed with this specific applicant. We also have a healthcare contribution in line with, um, um, requests from CCG. Um, we did actually receive, uh, the final comments this afternoon, that is on the green sheet. Obviously, that is a very, um, that is a one-line summary of, of, of several pages. Obviously, that came very late in the day, today. But essentially, it just endorsed what we expected to be the contributions to be based upon the responses on Seven A and Seven C. So, um, just, just to note, members, that, that contribution is also agreed as a financial contribution, uh, with the, with the applicant. So walking cycle improvements, again, the report, you know, attempts to, uh, uh, deal with, um, those improvements, um, connection to, to the village, but also securing, uh, route north to the Travelling Showperson site and beyond. Um, Essex Rams, as, as would be expected, is, is agreed as part of the one oh six package. Um, tree planting, three trees per dwelling. Um, so also there, there is some loss of trees that, that do get compensated for as part of, um, the one oh six as well. Open space, again, the office report deals with, um, bear in mind, this is an outline application, deals with the ability to deal with open space within, within its own site. And there is also wildlife site contribution, um, agreed, um, for like a wildlife sites, um, within, uh, sorry, to the west of Seven A and to the south of Seven C. So, um, that financial contribution is also a commitment as well. So, sorry, I appear to have missed off the word conclusion, um, on, on that element. But in, in conclusion, this is an allocated site, it's allocated for specialist residential. Um, that's what the application, um, is submitted as. Obviously, the C2 element is a choice made by the applicant to submit on that basis. It wasn't a requirement of the policy. The, the requirement of the policy was to deal with, um, accommodation for elderly persons. Hence, you see, I think, condition four or five deals with the over, over fifty-five, uh, as a, as a restrict, as a, as a restriction. Um, so that, that is dealt with through, um, that mechanism. So C2 is not, not, not a crucial aspect of, of the application, that was a choice made by the applicant. So we have an approved master plan. Um, the office report deals with, um, some, some concerns with the layout as shown. But obviously, that layer, bear in mind, is indicative. You know, we have an expectation this will be high-quality development. Um, and there's an acceptance of, um, a different type of concept for retirement living than might, than what might be expected from a C, standard three C, C three dwelling product that, that would require conformity to, um, garden sizes, space, um, um, designated gardens, parking on plot, uh, back-to-back distances overlooking relationships, that type of thing. So, you know, we're generally accepting of a, potentially a different concept coming forward here for, um, this allocation. We get key, um, infrastructure delivered in terms of, um, securing land and securing provision of a walking cycling route safe, um, to, to connect to the village. Um, because obviously this application is part of Seven B. Um, again, that was, uh, the applicant's choice. Uh, we'll deal, we deal with, um, the application that's in front of us. We secure affordable housing contribution, um, which again was negotiated through the viability, um, review. Um, we've, and we've got section one of six obligations outlined within the office report. Um, and so therefore the recommendation is approval, subject to those conditions and completion of the, the section one oh six agreement.
Thank you. I don't think we've got anyone to speak, have we? In that case, I'll go straight over to the committee. Who would like to start? Gosh, it's gone quiet. Counselor Lee.
Hopefully, a couple of very simple, easy questions. Um, strategic site policy, Seven B suggests around two hundred and fifty units. Um, this proposed is a hundred and ninety. Um, I guess that two hundred and fifty units figure came from somewhere that there's a need for them. Uh, and a hundred and ninety is obviously quite a few less. Um, will they be made up elsewhere or are they going to be made up on the other parts of Seven B? And a further question would be, with regards to the contribution for affordable housing, the one point, voting one point three million, um, how is that actually calculated? Um, where does that money actually go? And is there a time limit on spending that money? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, sorry, it might be worth, it might be worth just on the Seven, uh, B, around, around two fifty point five to get, uh, the plan back up, if I could. So I'll, I'll use this plan if I can, um, Chair. So, um, you know, the Seven B, um, connects to Seven C, Seven C, C, C north on this plan. So as you saw from the application red line, it's roughly, it's roughly about half for the, for the sake of, um, splitting hairs. So roughly about half, half the site area. So, uh, one ninety, obviously, there's a shortfall of sixty. Um, you know, it's, it's fair to assume, you know, based on very crude analysis that you can fit sixty within the rest of the parcel. Um, certainly, we don't have an application before us for any, anything else to go within that parcel. Obviously, the allocation isn't, isn't changing through the local, uh, the revised local plan. So there is an expectation that around two fifty will still be achieved within Seven B. Obviously, um, it's the applicant's choice, how, how they submit or how they portion up that land potentially. Um, so again, that's just something that we have to deal with on its merits. Um, obviously, if we're dealing with three hundreds, um, unity, it, 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 it might, it might be claimed that it's more than the allocation. So because we, we're dealing with less and within a lesser site area, obviously, um, you know, the concern from the local authority would be, are, are we achieving those numbers? And I, I don't think this would prejudice the, the achieving of, of sixty more units, uh, in my mind, given the rest of the, the land available, um, to the south of this application site. So, you know, the, the numbers were a requirement of the local plan based upon, um, the evidence requirements for, um, specialist residential. Obviously, this is, this is a key part of that input, um, within the local plan. Um, you know, generally, we, we would have this dealt with through, um, development management policies. Obviously, this is a, this is a key, specific allocation for two fifty. So a substantial number that is obviously, um, needed within, within the borough. So that, that's a key requirement of, of, of this policy and, and more widely for, for, for the City Council. Um, just in terms of the, um, the, the one point two seven five million. So, um, it's probably worth just referring back to just, just the context, the history that the report seeks to run through. So, uh, ordinarily, um, on a standard C3 scheme, you'd expect thirty-five percent affordable housing on-site. Um, obviously, the, the development management policies were amended, um, from the previous, um, kind of Chelms, Chelmsford plan, um, within our local plan in order that we could specifically capture, um, these type of seat or specifically C2 units. So that essentially, what we used to find is that there was, there was various viability submissions submitted to us on the basis that, um, if something was a C2 use, then it didn't, it didn't require the affordable housing. But obviously, we, the new, the new policy, or sorry, the, the existing policy from twenty twenty basically captures C3 and C2. This falls within, in that category. So, um, there's an immediate requirement for affordable housing in some form. You know, we, we then have to go beyond that to say, is the thirty-five percent a, appropriate here? The, the report deals with the history in terms of, bear in mind, this was, this was at the point where the, the MPPI sought to exclude first times from being captured within this top of elderly persons, um, um, accommodation. So that, that So that immediately dropped that percentage requirement to twenty-two percent. So bear in mind that if we were to achieve affordable housing on a site of this nature, that can be, that can prove difficult for our P's given that the service charge is obviously usually very, you know, can be quite expensive on such units. So and the reality is that where we had a viability assessment, basically arguing that zero was, or zero affordable housing was the kind of viable position. And we would then have to use our own consultants to work against. And it basically becomes a negotiated position about what the land can afford in terms of taking the site forward. So once we shift from onsite provision, again, you know, in terms of, we have to consider how would that work in reality. So once we consider an off-site contribution, it would then work backwards with, well, once a developer's profit is built into the scheme, which is permissible by the planning guidance, what level of surplus money can be afforded by the development? And that figure equates to one point two seven five. Obviously, that is subject to various sensitivities. But, you know, obviously, we have to work on the basis that, and I'll present to you that it's been reviewed by our independent assessor. And this is the point at which that we have sought to agree that deal. In terms of where that money goes, obviously, the finer details of the one oh six are not outlined. So in some respects, we can control the parameters of that. So, you know, that will be a decision to be made between, well, certainly, our internal housing policy colleagues. But normally, you know, it can be a combination of uses in terms of possible temporary accommodation, one spectrum, to actual purchases of properties or monies that go towards projects that are funded through council means. So there's a variety of avenues that that money could be spent. In terms of time limits, ordinarily, on a one oh six, there'd be a ten-year default period. Again, that would be subject to some negotiation on the legalities of extending that if that's where that question was going, Counselor. So, you know, I'm just, I'm speaking very broad brush at the moment because obviously, those details aren't foreign as through the section one of six at the moment.
Okay. Counselor Hynne.
Thank you, Chair. The mix of dwellings on page one, two, three of the pack demonstrates a large portion of two-bedroomed houses. My expectation would have been there'd be more one-bedroom rather than, and there is a few three-bedroomed houses. My concern, my question really is, they are currently going to be designated as specialist residential homes. Are they protected as special residential homes for older persons? Or could these become market viable in some future case? So once we give them planning permission, they could go and put them on the market?
Thanks, Chair. I'll take the question. So in terms of the unit mix, obviously, the office report just, you know, bear in mind, this is indicative in mix as well. Obviously, we're not crystallizing the mix through the planning permission. So it deals with the considerations of the mix. Obviously, they're slightly off in terms of the adopted local plan and the new schnauk mix. But it's not something that would be considered to be unusual necessarily because what you might find, and certainly what this application is presented as, and the planning statement is presented as an inspired villages concept, which is a specific product out in the marketplace. They have around a dozen projects within the country. So, you know, they were the original interested parties. Now, it's not specific that they will be the end user, obviously, because we're just dealing with the use and the red line here in terms of this planning permission. But what you'd expect in terms of a retirement village as this is presented is that you would expect people to be downsizing essentially, which is why you don't, which is why you don't get any four beds. You do get some three beds because obviously, you know, some people may be downsizing from quite large properties, for example. So three beds are included in there. Two beds is a prevailing mix, which is potentially, you know, what I would expect, that, you know, you might have some co-sharing or you might have a visitor's bedroom, for example, if you had a couple within there. And obviously, a fair degree of number of one-bed units. So it's less, it's less, I think the office report tries to get the points across that we're less concerned about the mix in terms of this type of use than if this was a standard C three product whereby, you know, we are working on specific dwelling, kind of bedroom sizes to meet specific needs. Obviously, the key driver here is that we get the numbers per se. Obviously, you know, if this was significantly waiting for beds, I think that, you know, we'd be making a more significant type of comment in opposition to that. But the mix, we, you know, we deem as appropriate at the moment. But obviously, bear in mind that that is not fixed by this planning permission. Sorry, Chair, sorry, Counselor. The other question was about the flip to potential standard housing, I believe, Counselor. So, yeah, so obviously, the application is presented as a retirement village, hundred and ninety units. C two is within the description. Again, that is the applicant's choice to do it that way. So, you know, the application will be bound by that description. It will be bound by the conditions on the planning permission as well, bound by the one oh six element. So obviously, you know, members, we don't have a crystal, I don't have a crystal ball in front of me. I couldn't say what comes in the future. But obviously, I think that the comfort that you could take that this is as it seems and would stay that way would be the fact that the local plan continues to designate around two fifty specialist residential units here. If this came in for a standard three, sorry, standard C three type market dwelling type product, then you would have a policy conflict to deal with. And again, you know, there's nothing precluding applicant from seeking to vary their planning permission, but that would need a new planning application in my mind. And that would, you know, come forward for consideration through officers and members likely a committee. So I think, you know, there's a number of protections in place there that officers would consider that would protect this. So hopefully, that answers your query, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you for those responses. So my thought process here is that we are trying to meet the need of special residence homes. And I just wanted to clearly understand if there are any conditions, as you say, that we would be able to put on this planning application that would keep these impurpurity, special residential homes, if that's the right word.
Thank you, Chair. So I think I was just kind of finding the relevant condition. There is a condition which basically says that, you know, ties occupants to over fifty-fives. I think that, you know, that there's either a condition that can deal with that. I think that if we're seeking more security, it can be done through the legal agreement. Office considered that the condition was a relevant way to do that. Obviously, what we can't do is duplicate clauses essentially. But if members did have a concern, obviously, that can be noted as part of this agenda. You know, the applicant, through their submission and through my dialogue with them, you know, has been willing to offer up that type of, you know, security within a legal agreement in any event. So, you know, I think the members preferred it to see in the legal agreement. Then we can delete that condition and the legal agreement can deal with that more explicitly than a planning condition. But obviously, that's not presented today because obviously, didn't feel that that was necessary.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yeah, I also had a question around the provision for affordable housing. So with C two, there is still the requirement to have thirty-five percent affordable housing. And my understanding is because of the nature of this development, in lieu of that, the developer will pay one point two five million. So when will that be paid? Would that be on completion of the development? Or at what stage would, and is there a definite guarantee that that money would come true?
Yeah, so, well, if I deal with thirty-five percent issue, because that is, it's a complex one. The office report tried to deal with that. So yes, you know, C two as a use would be captured by policy DM two, which is a relevant one that deals with affordable housing. So the starting point would be thirty-five percent. The office report seeks to deal with the history here because the MPPF has obviously changed in both December twenty-three and then December twenty-four in that there's an element of that thirty-five percent that was excluded under the MPPF. So essentially, you would then be dropping down to a twenty-two percent requirement. That is not specifically there in the MPPF now. So it could be argued that you would uplift that requirement back to thirty-five percent. But that doesn't get away from the fact that you would still have the onsite issues in terms of geographically, where would you put that thirty-five percent? And also, the service charges by a specific product could render those service charges problematic to standard RP provision because obviously, they would form part of the same wider site here in terms of the red line. So I think once you add that layer on to a viability scenario, the percentage becomes kind of academic in that when an applicant is pointing forward a case that zero, either zero percent onsite or zero percent contribution is viable, then obviously, we're having to work back from that position. So, you know, in essence, what we'd say is that the council take the view that it wouldn't be appropriate to seek this onsite. That would then, that then kind of flips that requirement to an in lieu provision as a financial contribution, which obviously, our policy gives us that ability to do so in such exceptional circumstances. And I think that, you know, that is definitely the case in this scenario. In terms of, in terms of the trigger points, you know, obviously, we would like that money as soon as possible, I think, is the ideal scenario. Specifically because, you know, the viability assessment was done at a particular time. Obviously, we would seek to capture that as an amount as soon as possible. So in effect, the one oh six will always seek to get that money as soon as possible. Obviously, we're not dealing with a standard house builder in terms of this, certainly the application and the applicant in this case. So there's an ability to front-load, in my mind, that requirement specifically on the basis that that one point two seven million was agreed at a point in time. So ordinarily, we may have some pushback from a standard house type builder. I'm talking general terms because obviously, they will seek a return in the interim in order to release those funds. Obviously, one point three million is not, nearly one point three million is not an insignificant number. So that, that will be down to the detail of the one oh six unless members are given a specific instruction to officers about when they would like that money to come forward.
Is that okay? Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? In that case, I will take it to a vote. I move the application. Banter's Field, Main Road, Great Lees. We approve subject to the completion of a section one agreement and compliance with the conditions detailed in the report at pages one three seven to one four seven of the agenda pack. The details, minor variations of which, which may include that piece on the green sheet. I don't know whether it should as an extra.
No, Chair, that is already noted, that is already noted in the section one of six section, the healthcare contribution.
Right, fine. That would be delegated, anything else will be delegated to the Director of Sustainable Communities and Planning Development Services Manager in liaison with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Committee. Do I have a second there? I do. All those in favor? Excellent. Anyone against? No. In that case, the application is approved. Thank you. We're moving on now to item ten. And thank you, everyone who's had to wait this long before we get round to you. But we have to cover everything. Right. Okay, item ten is Daniel Kirby House Care Home, Molsham Street. Can I have the officer's report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Proposal as set out on the slide in front of you there. The application property is a much extended nineteen thirties detached house, much extended nineteen thirties detached house, garden to the rear and five parking spaces to the front. It's located at the southern end of Molsham Street at its junction with Brooklyn's Walk. You can see it there. You also see it's in the vicinity of the Miami Roundabout. This slide shows the site in more detail with its surroundings. See nearby property, the Lions in the sort of top left-hand side of the slide. It's access driveway leading back down to Molsham Street, which separates the application property from Stump Cross and the detached property which fronts Molsham Street. The five parking spaces to the front and parking and maneuvering areas to Brooklyn's Walk, which are immediately adjacent to the right. That slide also shows within the red rectangle an extension approved in October twenty twenty-three, sorry, twenty twenty-four, for a single-story extension to the property. That has not been built yet. So in nineteen eighty-nine, planning permission was granted for a C two use, which is in the residential institutions category in the use classes order. So granted for C two use and restricted by conditions to use as an elderly person's care home only. And an occupancy condition requires female residents to be sixty years or over and male residents to be sixty-five years or over. So the current application, under section seventy-three, the Town and Country Planning Act, is to delete one condition and to vary to others. The purpose being so the premises can be occupied by any adult over eighteen in need of care. Let me best flick back to this slide. Local residents have objected to the proposal. Their concerns are that they feel that the change would be, would lead to occupants that would be inappropriate in this location. The feeling is that younger residents will have a set of differing, challenging behaviours. And that could adversely affect nearby occupiers, living conditions from noise, disturbance, and along with other wider concerns about challenging behaviours, including threats to safety. Now, these concerns have been fully considered. But the premises would be subject to a robust management regime. The scheme is supported by Essex County Council Adult Social Care. And they have an onboarding process, which is a scheme approval process. That process has been completed. It's required before residents can be placed by Essex County Council. And it means that ECC is satisfied that the home would provide a good quality and stable environment for residents. The service quality would be... The service quality would be monitored and regulated by the Care Quality Commission. And you see on the slide in front of you, the role of the Care Quality Commission. They would also have a role in managing the premises. And the premises are now registered with the Care Quality Commission. Overall, officers are satisfied that a care home for younger residents can operate in what is a well-connected urban location without an unacceptable level of harm being caused to the locality and neighbouring property. It's felt that the five car parking spaces to the front of the premises are adequate in this location and approval is recommended, subject to the conditions set out in the recommendation. That's been quite brief, Chair, but happy to come back with responses to any questions.
Thank you. Right, we have several people who wish to speak. Can I start with Laura Dudley Smith?
Can you hear me? Okay, you said it was a bit quiet earlier. Is that better? Move it down a bit. Good evening, councillors. Thank you for this opportunity to speak again this evening. Serious Property are planning consultants acting on behalf of Calm Futures Limited. As your officers have just detailed, Daniel Kirby House has an existing permission for use as an elderly care home. Calm Futures offer supported living care facilities which fall under use class C two. As this sits within the same use class as an elderly care home, formal planning permission is not required for this change of use to take place. This application therefore seeks permission purely for the removal of condition three and amendment of conditions four and seven applied to the original consent as these conditions currently restrict the age of residents being cared for within the property to being over the ages of sixty and sixty-five. It is important that this is the matter considered this evening, as opposed to the principle of the property being used for supported living instead of an elderly care home, given this is permitted to take place under the allowances of the use class order. Simplistically, this application considers only the age of the residents, not the type of care. We feel it important to emphasise that the change of age of users of the property would not result in a material change to the operation of this site to an extent which would render the original commission unacceptable in planning terms. The nature of supported living care for over sixties would not be materially different to the care offered to younger members of the community. As such, the impact on the local environment would see no change as a direct result of lifting the current restriction. Should there be concerns over risk of public nuisance or noise, whether founded or not, any such matters are of course managed through separate environmental health and public safety legislative and regulatory processes. Given that the use of the site to provide supported living care is already deemed acceptable in principle and your officers have confirmed that the proposed change is in accordance with the relevant adopted local plan policies, we respectfully request your agreement to remove and amend the relevant conditions to ensure that this facility can support the needs of a full range of users for which there is a significant care demand in Essex, as opposed to only those over the ages of sixty and sixty-five. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the next one there? Alan Betts?
Good evening. My name is Alan Betts, Managing Director of Calm Futures Limited. We're a care provider in Essex supporting people with learning disabilities, autism and associated needs. Our mission is to support people achieve maximum independence, enjoy the same opportunities as others and live in rich lives. For context, the average age of people we support is thirty-seven years. Our senior leadership team consists of Daniel Wiley, our CEO, who is a qualified mental health nurse with over twenty-five years of experience. He founded two award-winning care organisations, Aldnet Care in two thousand and eight and Autumn Care in two thousand and fourteen. Mandy O'Hara, our operations manager, is a qualified learning disability nurse with twenty-five years of experience. She's held roles from support worker to quality manager, specialising in care and compliance. As managing director, I have nearly forty years' experience in social care, starting at Essex County Council at the age of sixteen and holding senior roles in both public and private sectors. We already operate several services in mid-Essex, recently taking over a contract at Goldlay Square, Chelmsford, where the council asked us to mobilise at short notice as the previous provider's contract was terminated. We were selected for this contract due to our quality of service delivery. Daniel Kirby House has been developed in conjunction with Essex County Council, with officers stating that this service addresses the high demand for accommodation with support in the area. They've praised our collaborative approach during the process which sets us apart from our competitors. We are regulated by the Care Quality Mission, which assesses us against legal standards for its ongoing holistic evaluation process, including unannounced visits and all external feedback received. As part of this, CQC considers feedback from the council's quality monitoring team, who routinely assesses against national performance indicators. Before opening the service, we undergo a thorough CQC registration process, including a detailed application, site visit and management team vetting. Additionally, ECC conducts rigorous care and property compliance checks before onboarding the service for operation. Our quality rating with CQC is good and we are seen by Essex as one of their top quality care providers.
Thank you. Moving on, Daniel Wiley?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Wiley and I'm a registered mental health nurse for seventeen years and I'm the Chief Executive of Calm Futures. Daniel Kirby House is a state-of-the-art supportive environment for adults with learning disabilities, designed to the requirements, team of Essex County Council, to meet the specific needs of people that it has a statutory duty to provide care for. There is a shortage of this type of care bed in Chelmsford. This leads to residents being sent out to county at a greatly increased cost to the taxpayer, as well as being further distant from their families. In the ECC Supportive Living Demand Bulletin from October twenty twenty four, Chelmsford has the second largest unmet demand. Of the total number of people countywide actively seeking suitable accommodation, ninety-two percent are under the age of fifty-five. Despite our best efforts to reassure the local community, including inviting councillor Pully and the neighbours to meet the individuals that we support and discuss our work, some concerns remain. We have made it clear that we are registered to care for people, individuals with learning disabilities. We are, we have no incidences of drug use. We are not a drug and alcohol unit, as has been mistakenly suggested. It is very clear to us that one resident's views appear to have brought us here tonight, despite there being nothing within the planning policy for this application not to be approved. Alan referred to Goldlay Square service we operate, which is nine flats. This is just five minutes away from Daniel Kirby House and it's built in a residential area. It is operated without issue or danger to local residents, as are the other similar facilities operated by local providers. Why should Daniel Kirby House be viewed differently? The officer has set out planning issues and clarified why the proposals accord with the relevant planning policies. ECC market vision in the current market shaping strategy paper is to enable people to live their life to the fullest through a vibrant and sustainable care market, supporting Essex residents to develop their strength and personal independence. There has been a huge interest and request for placement since the service was approved by CQC and on-boarded by Essex County Council. If either had concern about the location or our ability to operate the service, it would have not been approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Samantha Neil?
Good evening. Sorry. My name is Samantha Neil and I am the mother of Katie Eileen Neil, born on the eighteenth of the twelfth, two thousand and one. I've spent all of Katie's life fighting for her rights. We spent most of Katie's early years in hospital, trying to find out what was wrong, but nobody could find anything so specific. Right on the street, reports reported states that Katie was demanding child who needed twenty-four hour care. Fortunate for us, we found Hargrave House based in Sandham, Chelmsford, which was an amazing place and felt like home. Katie thrived here and settled well. Unfortunately, we were told without a great deal of notice that Hargrave House was shutting, another eighteen, under-eighteens care facility closing without any alternative care in place. We've spent years fighting to find a suitable place for Katie, including a court case preventing her being moved to the north of England because of no suitable accommodation locally. After a lot of fighting, Katie was temporarily transferred to Lavender House in Colchester. This was for a short break and respite care and not for long-term living. Again, another fight commenced to keep Katie local to Chelmsford. Katie's father pushed for Katie to move to the property at sixty-seven A, Frommore Road in Brentwood. I do not think the property is suitable for Katie as the other residents are all much older. Katie is still only twenty-three. But this was all we could find within a short distance of her family. In January twenty twenty-four, we spotted the sign for Calm Futures outside the property at Daniel Kirby House on Molsham Street. Immediately, I contacted Calm Futures and spoke to Alan Betts, who was very helpful and advised what they were offering and that I would need to contact my social worker Doug Jones to proceed with a prior replacement. This has taken a year, but hopefully will be worth it. I have visited Daniel Kirby House. The property is stunning and with some adjustments, we'll be able to meet all of Katie's needs. She'll be five to ten minutes away from all her family, which will not only give Katie but her family precious time together. I've been advised that the intention is the residents will be younger than where she is now, which will prove a more stimulating environment for her. Government and council talk about diversity and inclusion, but it still seems that certain parts of society are still not accepting of this. Placement like Daniel Kirby's house were impossible to find. Believe me, I spent years searching for somewhere that Katie could live and continue to see her family.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to stop you, but we need to hear everyone.
Thank you.
But thank you and we do hear your emotion. Thank you. We have all that information down. Right, can we move on to Eileen Baldwin? Or Eileen Baldwin? Do you wish to speak? No. Okay. We have the information, don't worry. John Yeumans? Yeumans, sorry.
A question from our legal adviser. The council considered there to be a need for the elderly age condition to be imposed to protect neighbourhood amenity when the planning permission was originally granted. What has now changed? I would also like to bring your attention to the last sentence of the reason of conditions three and four. Alternative use in the same class would be unlikely to meet these criteria and be unacceptable. We bought Stump Cross in two thousand and seven. Our solicitor warned that the pub opposite could change hands with a detrimental effect on the neighbourhood, but he was not concerned about Ashley House as it had the age condition attached to it. To remove the condition will result in the loss of an elderly care home that with Chelmsford's aging population, it still needs. According to the twenty twenty-one census, elderly residents increased by over twenty-five percent, yet younger residents fell by seven point eight percent. We spoke to the Molsham Residential Care Home Manager, who explained to us that there was huge demand for elderly care beds in Chelmsford. In the planning consideration six point one C, this is a fundamental change, as if there were twelve residents with complex needs as opposed to twelve elderly residents in the care home, then staffing levels would be greatly increased to take this into account for the extra care required. This in turn would mean more staff parking required unless the number of residents was significantly reduced. Again, this goes back to protecting neighbourhood amenity. Going back to the previous lady who just spoke, she said her daughter needed twenty-four hour care, yet there's only five car parking spaces for twelve residents. So how can they have the care needed with that parking requirement? We had a meeting with Calm Futures. One of their suggestions for parking was to park, that they was going to suggest their staff park in Tesco's
Thank you. For three hours. Thank you very much. I have all your information. Can I move on to Joanna Yeumans?
Please refuse this application on the basis of loss of neighbourhood amenity, loss of our privacy, noise concerns, which are likely to be day and night, loss of community asset for the elderly and fears of safety for our family. We are good and kind people and we want to welcome new residents to the Daniel Kirby House. But I am afraid, our fears are not for ourselves and neighbours, but also for the possible twelve young people with complex need living together. Something I've noticed tonight, nobody has talked about all the documents in the application is actually for residents with complex needs. In regard to the planning officer's report, the exact summary says that I have a lack of authoritative evidence. This is obviously difficult to prove as the facility isn't yet operational. There is evidence within the documents of the planning application, namely the supporting info and client profiles and the management strategy document. I have previously worked for mine and I have first-hand experience of how reactive and unpredictable service users can become in a moment. The council wishes to remove the condition which is imposed to protect us. Surely if it is the council to provide authoritative evidence to prove my fears are wrong and not the other way around. My fear is people with complex needs. Hurting my children when they come home after dark, if there's people that are just going to be not properly cared for. The proposal plans for just two members of staff per day for twelve people, it's just insufficient. Supporting info, client profiles, profile B, is a person who spits on the floor, likes to take his clothes off in the community and can grab staff members when he is in pain. In the staff training manual, it says that there is e-learning. There is no cover for experience qualifications required by staff or first aid training.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We have your information. Sharmin Rahman? I hope you can reach.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Sharmin Rahman. Every document provided by Calm Future Limited to Essex Council and Social Services all refer to the prospective residents are those with the complex need. So my first highlight is of the management strategy. So when it comes to safeguarding, ensuring the safety of the staff level, CQC regulation requires if I care home residents have greater needs than more qualified staff they required in hand. Daniel Kirby House strategy is two staff for evening weekend was a mention. So for the twelve residents with complex need, no other staff information is provided for the weekdays. So I work in a similar environment and from my experience, I can say the varieties of support they need depends on the residents with the complex need. Sometime one to one, sometime two to one, or sometime even a small group. There is eight people in a group, they need four member staff. I just wanted to say, the lady mentioned about her daughter Katie, with the twelve, with the complex need, I appreciate the young people, we need their support. But with the twelve residents, I don't think that Daniel Kirby House will be able to provide the support that she needs with the two, sorry, with the twelve residents. Then comes to the onboarding process, which is mentioned by the Essex County Council, that shared houses usually two to four tenants. My question, with the twelve people with eighteen plus, which is variety of age and with the complex need, are they able to manage what they're supposed to, the way they should manage? Is it safe for the twelve residents? Is it safe for the staff? Is it safe for the neighbourhood people and the children? So, and also, I live in the Stump Cross, which is just right next to the Daniel Kirby House. So in two thousand and twenty-three, I bought the Stump Cross and when I bought the house, I look at the Ashley House as a care home, which is for sixteen.
Thank you. I have the rest of your information. We have Mohammed Khan? Sorry?
Eileen's not here, he's my husband. So he's not here, but he wrote it down.
Okay, so that covers, okay.
A little bit left, so can I say on behalf of him? He just left for the night shift.
Right, I see.
So that's why he had to, he just dropped us and he left.
I understand.
Okay.
We have his information, I believe. But do you have his statement?
Yeah, I have down here.
Okay. Well, if you can read that. Again, you have two minutes.
So in the other report, it's section two point four, they mention about, they completely omitted about the Stump Cross, which is next to the Daniel Kirby House. And when we bought the house, we mentioned about the, we read about the Ashley House and where we read about the Ashley House has the restriction for the care home sixteen, sixty plus. That made us feel safe to buy the Stump Cross, give us the confidence and we moved to the house with our three young children. So our proposal for this... So our proposal for this, to reject the application in terms of number of residents, which is twelve, then with the complex need as well as with a few other things. There is the extension of the height of the brick wall to in the front, which is between Stum Cross and the Daniel Kirby House. So because they put multiple CCTV cameras in the front of the Daniel Kirby House, so it's compromising our privacy with my family and the children. So we need the height, the height, we want to extend the height of the brick wall. And as well as we propose the age limit fifty plus, not probably sixty-sixty, we propose a fifty plus. And also we propose that there needs to be a condition for no music or no outside gathering after eight P M, just to ensure the sleeping for the children in the neighbourhood. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Poley?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you for committee. No sooner do I stand down for committee, but I'm back.
Can't get rid of you.
But thank you, thank you for allowing this to come to committee and thank you for your attention. I don't know whether I thought this to be relatively straightforward when I first saw it, but it certainly has engaged me a lot in trying to bottom out the proposal itself and the implications of what this removal would be. C two, I have to confess, is relatively new to me, and I'm glad that it's coming to this committee for discussion. Because I think that you can sense from Daniel Wiley that this is a need and an intention on the part of his company to repeat this sort of operation, if he gets permission for this, in other parts of Chelmsford or other parts of the county. And no one suggests that the need is not present. The need is present, no one questions the goodwill and the experience of the people who are proposing this particular use of this house. But it's not quite that simple, I discovered as I was going along. As you've heard, this was a, this was a condition on an approval in nineteen eighty-nine. Now, the council has been unable to provide me with an officer report for that. Robin tells me he can't find it. But we were able to find a couple of documents that related to life at that time or that particular proposal. One was a stamped and sealed document by the council, between the council and the intending operator and purchaser of that property. And that was a legally binding agreement, which was subsequently superseded by a planning permission, which laid out very clearly what that planning permission was intended to be for. And unfortunately, it didn't get attached to my statement, which Dan kindly circulated earlier on. But that document is very clear that it intends this use for older people to be continuing. Now, it probably can't be legally continuing in perpetuity, I think we all understand that. But the intent at that time was very clear. And alongside that was a sketch plan of the housing that was there at that time, the residential area as it then was, that was deemed to be an inappropriate location for an old people's home. So let's just ask the question, the first question one must ask under section seventy-three application is what's different? If you're looking to remove a condition, you ask what's different? Now, the residential area has increased. It's still very pleasant, it's still very pleasant, but the residential area is more populated now by new blocks in Brooklands and the new houses that you heard about. So let's be quite clear, it doesn't have to, there's no rule that says it has to increase at all. Because this was set up to protect the residents as they then were. And that seems to me to be the case. It's very close also to Gold Lake, I'm sorry, very close also to the museum and to Oaklands Park. Now, that is very, very heavily used, as we all know, and God bless it. And it's not too far away either, from next, just a step further down the road to Mulsham College. So the net result of that, I have observed, when I've gone to visit the neighbours or visited the house and met with Dan Wiley, it's very clear that the pedestrianisation, the volume of pedestrians along that path, part of the footway, is very high. Not just for residential areas, but for the park and Tesco's and so on as well. So the question is for you, the first question is, what's different? Is the change in whatever circumstance it is sufficient to remove this condition? And obviously, you've heard the arguments and a stronger case can be made for it than you expect, that it should stay. And I think the other thing that one needs to recognise is that it is, as an old people's home, as an old people's care home, as you've heard earlier on, it's something very much in demand for residents by older people and indeed for their families. Now, this small care home, as it now was, and some would like it to remain, is a really valued community asset by the families and by the older people themselves to have the possibility of living nearby in their older age. Then that would be, that would be a community asset. So it is a loss of a community asset, which, if argued, would be against policy. So there we go, that's the first thing that needs to be asked. Should it, what's changed and the case is stronger than I expected it to be? Now, if you come to the conclusion that it can be removed or changed, the question is, what happens then? I learned in my education about all of this, that use class C two is in danger and indeed is being abused in various parts of the country in a couple of different ways. It's set up as what's called an unfettered C two permission. And if you remove this condition, it would be an unfettered permission.
Counselor Poley, you only have a few seconds left, I'm afraid.
Well, that's extraordinary, because this is a trend setting.
Five minutes you have.
Well, you've heard the possibility of a lower age group.
Yeah.
And you've heard the, you've heard the strong suggestions that management plans and various documents exist. In order to prevent abuse, unfettered C two use, we need to bring all of those documents together into a management plan, which would also be conditioned.
Thank you, Counselor Poley.
Well, I hope that people have had a chance to read this document. It's a more complicated case than I believed it was going to be.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you like to come back before we go to the committee?
Thank you, Chair. Whatever the wider considerations were at the time in nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine, when the application was being considered and the conditions that were imposed on that time, we have to consider the current application on the basis of its merits and current policies. Officers have done that and come up with a recommendation. We've also taken into account the surroundings of the premises, which are more intensely developed than they were in nineteen eighty-nine. So they are factors which have been taken into account. We accept that the loss of a C two elderly care home is a loss in the locality, but there is also a need for a C two care home for other members of the community unfettered by age constraints. Just bear with me. Concerns about the behaviours of residents. Key considerations here are that the premises will be managed. Any incidents that arise would be dealt with. The premises come under the management and jurisdiction of the Care Quality Commission. And Essex County Council would only place people in the premises if they were satisfied by the quality and nature of care. So we feel that the management of the premises and dealing with any incidents that arise would really be something that is covered by legislation outside planning. We would not favour imposing conditions to involve the council in the management of the premises. We do not feel that would meet the test of necessity that are required in terms of use of planning conditions. Mention was made of the low wall, which is to the front side of the property. We don't see any need for a higher wall to be put in that position. Matters relating to CCTV and privacy will be covered by other legislation outside planning. Is there anything else, Chair, that I've missed?
I can't think of anything. No, I don't think so. Maybe the committee, if you know something, might soon come up. Okay, I'll go straight to the committee then, please. Who would like to start? Clarence Luton?
Thank you. I have a question. Is it currently in use as an old people's care home? Are there currently residents there and therefore as a result of any change, they would have to vacate for the new residents to come in? Do we know? Thank you.
No, my understanding is that it's been vacant for a while prior to relatively recent refurbishment. So there have not been any elderly occupiers at the premises for some time.
Okay. Who else would like to speak?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to, well, ask a question actually about the, so there was a bit of discussion about the management of the, of the care home and how that would be run. But I was had a question of whether that is something that we as a planning committee would be getting involved in terms of, like, I think you might have just answered it, that the management plan is a separate thing. So we would anticipate that there would be a management plan. But I'm not expressing myself very well, I'm really sorry, I'll rethink about it. But a general comment would be that we had some representations from people who are going to run this particular care home, we think at this point. But I think that we as a planning committee would be giving permission for anyone to run this and it wouldn't be about a judgment about who is going to run it at this particular time. Because if we remove the condition, this arrangement might fall through and somebody else would come along and run the care home in the future. It has also been said already, but in terms of things like concerns about noise would be dealt with if they occurred by public health. And so that again is something that I don't particularly view, it's something that I'm going to use to influence my vote at this point. I don't have particularly an issue with removing this condition. I think if in the future what we really needed was care for older people, there is nothing stopping this becoming a care home for older people again. There could well be some older people in this care home as it stands if we remove this condition. I think by removing the condition, what it does is allow a bit more flexibility and what is needed in the community at any particular time, and I would be supportive of that.
Thank you. Who else? Counselor Hayman?
Thank you, Chair. It crystallised my mind just then when you said that the property is currently not in use for elderly care provision, because my concern was you'd be shipping out the elderly and bussing in the youth. Or the all-age care provision, as you said. So the concern I have here is that we as a city will lose one provision. And that one provision being a need for elderly care provision balanced by getting an all-aged care provision in the place. So it's a difficult, it's a difficult one for me, because I guess the owners of the property can bring on their business and do as they wish, right? I don't think we as a planning committee have any material bearing on the actions that they choose to take. It's just the city lose out. And so I'm still considering where I go with my vote. But the other thing that stood out for me, forgive me rambling a little bit, but was the age difference, sixteen sixty-five. I mean, I guess in nineteen eighty-eight, it was okay to differentiate between sexes. But I would have thought now we'd want to bring that up to date, if nothing else, if nothing was to change with the recommendation. So I'm still considering, I'll listen carefully to what the rest of the committee have to say.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, yeah, please.
Thank you. I think Counselor Poley was asking what has changed. And I feel that what's changed since nineteen eighty-eight is that there is more demand now for care for independent living, for younger people with complex needs. Clearly, apparently Chelmsford has got the second largest unmet demand for this kind of care. And we heard from the mother of somebody who potentially could live there, how desperately this care is needed, this provision is needed, and that was very persuasive. It feels, I mean, there are many, there are facilities, many facilities for older people in Chelmsford. I know that there's always demand, but there doesn't seem to be much in the way of provision for younger people who need this kind of care. And that is very persuasive. As other councillors have mentioned, there is other legislation that will protect and help neighbours to make sure that they're not disturbed by noise and other potential disturbance. And as far as the running of the, the running of the facility is concerned, that will be supervised by the Care Quality Commission. So the details of that are not our concern in planning. Thank you.
Counselor Dobson?
Thank you, Chair. Funny enough, I think Counselor Frascona has really said pretty much, you know, echoed my thoughts. There is a need for this facility. There are really no specific planning reasons to refuse it. And at the end of the day, the younger people, if they do have very sort of concise needs, they have a right to good care and a safe home. And I think that provided the management plan etcetera is put into place, which is covered by other legislation, I think, you know, I would be in support of this application. Thank you.
Did you want to come back?
Thank you. I've thought about how to say it better. So it was about the staff to resident ratio specifically, because that was brought up as a concern. And so my question really was to me, that doesn't feel like something that would be my concern making a decision about planning, because I think that's management concern for another body to be looking at and not something that I would be thinking about as part of my planning decision. And so I just wanted to check whether that is the case. Thank you.
That is correct. That's really a matter for the Care Quality Commission and the management of the home rather than a planning consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Counselor Lee?
Thank you, Chair. I'm still confused over the reasons for the conditions back then. I do appreciate that we need to look at the planning application today. But I just don't understand how back then they decided to put a condition for sixty, sixty-five. They put it in because of concerns over parking. I just don't understand that at all. Amenity residents, I can potentially see an impact, a different impact between younger people and older people. I think we've seen from I think we've seen from previous applications, this is a concern. I fully understand what we've heard earlier on. Fortunately, touching wood, that those that we've passed, I don't think we've experienced the concerns that have been feared. So with regards to getting rid of the age limit and amenity of nearby residents, I'm, I don't believe that's going to be an issue. And the parking space, I don't understand how that tells us at all, so I am happy to scrub that one. So I'm likely to be voting in favour, but I'm interested to hear other views.
Has anyone else wishes to speak? Looks as if you may have to make up your mind soon. In, in that case, if no one else wishes to speak, I will move the application. Double eight O two one O five S seventy-three B approved, subject to the conditions detailed in the report, pages one eight eight to one ninety of the agenda pack. Do I have a second? I do. All those in favour? Thank you. I think that's everyone. Thank you very much. That application has been approved and I do hope that residents will see that that will not be a major problem. So thank you everybody and thanks for your forbearance for waiting so long to be heard. Thank you. We have the planning appeals, but I think there's only one or two, so I will leave those to you to enjoy. Thank you very much. That closes the meeting for tonight. Thank you.